Call the order, the meeting of the city council here in Waverly for February 10th, 2020. Roll call, please, Carla.
Oh four.
Here.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkhouse.
Present.
Glazer.
Here.
Kengis.
Here.
Rothy.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
All right, all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D, approval of the agenda. Seek a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Remove approval of the agenda?
Motion?
Second.
Yeah, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item E, approval of the minutes. Approve the January 20th, 2020 regular meeting minutes, the January 25th, 2020 budget work study session minutes, and the January 27th, 2020 study session minutes. Take a motion.
I'll move to approve the January 20th, 2020 regular meeting minutes, January 25th, 2020 budget work study session minutes, and the January 27th, 2020 study session minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion or changes? All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Item F, our guest councilperson for the month of February is Josh Gilbert. Welcome, I'll give you the floor to tell us who you are and a little bit about you.
I'm Josh Gilbert, I've been a lifelong resident of Waverly, married with two kids, eight-year-old daughter, one-year-old son, and been on the fair board for eight or nine years, I don't remember for sure, and back in November, I was elected to be vice president of the fair.
Excellent. And whereabouts do you live in town?
Southwest Waverly, between the hospital and Brimwood.
Okay, excellent. So as you probably know, you have full rights of the council, everything outside of a vote and executive session, so feel free to chime in and give your thoughts.
You might regret that, so we'll see.
I don't, I don't, I actually encourage it, so welcome and feel at home, please. Item G, award recognition. City of Waverly received the Healthy Hometown Powered by Wellmark Community Award. I have, I'll turn it over to Garrett and then Amanda as well. Or maybe just Amanda.
Unless I call for reinforcements.
We're here for you.
All right, well, there's just a little, there's a plaque here, right, but I'll kind of explain. Nope, got to turn it on? Nope. Sorry. Turn it over a second.
There we go.
Let me see most of it anyways. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Amanda Ramthin, I'm the community health specialist at Waverly Health Center, but I'm also a member of one of our community health coalitions here in town called the Waverly Area Partnership for Healthy Living, or WAFL for short, is what we call it. So last Thursday, the community of Waverly was presented with the Healthy Hometown Powered by Wellmark Community Award at the Healthy Estate Initiative Awards in Des Moines. So there were three communities, I think there were seven finalists, and then three communities were awarded this award across Iowa, so the winners were recognized for their efforts to improve physical, social, and emotional well-being in their community. So this was the work of, our WAFL committee kind of put together the application and went through the actual process, but some of the tactics that we had in our application were work that our group had done, but then also we recognized some work that the community had done that improved the physical, social, emotional well-being of the community as well. So just a few examples of some of the things that were on our application that were recognized. I'm going to pass around a sheet for each of you, if you would like, if you want to pop that up there. This was our kind of success sheet that they put up when we were given the award on Thursday, so it has three of our biggest tactics that were in the application. The first being, you guys are very familiar with the road diet or the traffic calming measures that have gone on in the area, and so that is actually highly regarded by these two organizations, just by the way that it improves the walk and bikeability of the community. So that was one tactic that was on our application, and that was something that obviously others in the community did, but we wanted them to be aware of and to recognize. I'll let Ron maybe speak to the community gardens here in a second. Then on the far side there, it's been almost a year ago now, but I was here to speak about tobacco and nicotine-free parks policies in Waverly, so that was also something that was implemented that we had on our application. In addition to, we hosted a walking audit workshop in May of last year, and so then we had experts from the Healthy Hometown Organization come through the community, and we just walked about the community, and they helped us pinpoint some tactics that maybe we can focus on in the future to continue to improve walk and bikeability for our citizens. So some of the things, we found out that we were actually doing really well when it comes to walk and bikeability in our community, which is awesome, but they just gave us some ideas and some tips for future, if we have funding for those things, if those are just certain things we want to work on. So that was another thing that we had in our application. We also did a couple of things with Safe Routes to School, which our Safe Routes to School coordinator, Jackie Shares, kind of took the lead on. We provided instructional courses on bike safety for students. We've done those kind of in the surrounding communities, but then we, this last year we did it at St. Paul's, Lutheran School here in town, and then we also helped implement a walking school bus at West Cedar Elementary last year, and so that is basically the kids have a meeting spot that's somewhat near to the school, they either get dropped off there, or they walk to that meeting place, and then they have a volunteer adult there to meet them, and they all walk to school together. So again, just trying to improve physical activity levels in kids and make sure they can get to school safely still. And then the last thing on our application was encouraging fundraising efforts to promote physical activity. I think a lot of times fundraising efforts, especially within schools, are focused on food, which is something that they're encouraged to get away from, and so we recognized the Go Hawk 5K that has been done the past couple of years and has been highly successful, and is one of very few in the state like it, so that was in our application as well, and they were very impressed with that. Ron, do you want to give a couple words about the community gardens?
Good evening, I'm Ron Lent with Bremer Iowa State and Research Extension, got a chance to work with a number of you in the past. Tonight, we'll just give you a few short updates on it, and March 23rd, we'll give you more of a detail and plans for the future. This started 2010, several of your folks remember what 2008 was like with all the land that was ruined, so there was a meeting here in Waverly, 2010 in February. Tab Ray and then also Reverend Mark Anderson and ourselves were going, oh, what are you going to do with all this extra land, almost 100 properties? So the idea came up with, what about using some of the land potentially for some garden production? It's one of those ideas that started small and then sometimes kept growing. As it shows on your sheet there, excuse me, last year, we grew and donated about 8,400 pounds of food, mostly vegetables, but also fruit. Some of you have helped and spent a lot of time with us out there. The land is actually on Second Street Southwest and Fifth Avenue Southwest, just west of the park over there. Then about three years later, city fathers said, well, if you've been doing this much, would you like some more land? So we added an orchard, which is just one block east of the bowling alley. So that's now got 64 trees, we'll put six more in this spring, and then the community garden or at Second Street there, that has got about 64 raised beds. One of the reasons we went with raised beds over there is, as you can imagine, trying to farm lots that have now, what was once houses, driveways, land that was all the way from nice and deep and grass to absolute fill, so we put those over that area. It's also convenient for people to grow and raise. The food is all donated, and that's where it all went. Northeast Iowa Food Bank figures about 1.2 pounds per person for their purposes, about three-fourths of our products go there. So that means I garden-fed 7,000 people for a day. So some of the things that the city can be proud of, and that's what helped with all the extra work to get that award, so we'll see in a couple, another month and a half.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, so lastly, part of the award was, we were awarded $5,000 to just continue our efforts, and what we've been doing, we've been working with, yeah, you can pop those up, we've been working with the Healthy Hometown Organization for about a year and a half, our WAFL group has, and will continue to work with them in the future. Their services are all free, and they work with, I think I saw, about 55 communities in the state right now, and so basically, they helped us sit down and just really cast out a vision for what we want for the health and well-being of our community, and then they have a lot of evidence-based tactics that we can sit down and kind of action plan through, and they really just help guide our group and kind of keep us accountable. So we'll continue to work with them, and then we'll, we don't have specific plans for that $5,000 yet. There's been talk about possibly visiting one of our walking audit tactics, if there's something we can tackle that way. This next year, we're also going to be focusing on hopefully developing a couple pocket parks or small kind of gathering areas in the community, some spaces that are already existing, but just kind of beautifying them a little bit and encouraging people to come and use those areas, so maybe adding artwork or benches, using the funding for that. We've also maybe spoke about using that $5,000 as the match portion of a larger grant, so applying for other grant funding to be able to do more with. A lot of the grants that we're looking at require some kind of match, so that could be a good opportunity for us to use that funding in that way as well. But our group meets monthly, it is open to the community, we encourage people to get involved, and we hope that this momentum from this award will encourage people to kind of get excited about the work that we're doing and get involved too. So, do you guys have any questions for me or for Garrett?
I do have some questions.
Yeah, sure.
So you're looking for some ideas about where to put the $5,000, or, and it talks about promoting activities such as the Go Hawk 5K. What about, would the Ball Diamonds, putting that towards the Ball Diamonds be something? It's activities, would that be an option?
Potentially, yeah. So we have an action plan that we're working on that has, like I said, we kind of select from very specific evidence-based tactics with this Healthy Hometown group, and that's where the funding has come from, and they're very high-level, very general, so it's possible that some of the, that could fall under that category, yeah.
Okay. You talked about that evidence-based tactics.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate on the tactics, what those are, maybe?
I can try. There are probably close to 100 of them, but they all fall in the categories of eat well, move more, or feel better. So eat well focuses on the nutritional aspect of things, so that can be anywhere from helping promote our farmers' market, helping people who are maybe food insecure, those kinds of things, a whole wide variety of things, including school nutrition-based things as well. The move more is obviously physical activity-based, things that we've talked about when it comes to walk and bikeability of a community, improving physical activity of our students in our school district, and then the feel better is more like the community aspect of creating a sense of place for people where they can gather, or that's kind of where, that's the category where our nicotine-free policies fell under, so just creating more of an environmental things would fall under that category, so that's kind of how I can sum it up without knowing each and every one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You mentioned, Amanda, some walkability and bikeability suggestions, I think they said, is that, is anything that you're prepared to share or can share with us?
Do you remember any of them off the top of your head, Garrett? I know a lot of them were like continental-style crosswalks, which we have some already, but there are some areas where we could improve upon that.
I remember the bumpouts at the crosswalk up on Fifth Avenue by Wardburg was one that was suggested.
Yep, so we have a number of bumpouts, but they suggested a couple other places. Anything you can recall?
Shared bikeways on that list?
What's that?
Shared bikeways on that list?
Shared bikeways was not on that list. We do have the walkability study that you're more than welcome to, you know, look at. One thing I want to point out with that assessment was, a lot of the things that they suggested were either already in the works or have actually been done already. You know, we spoke about the bumpouts, some, for instance, there was talk about a raised crosswalk by the high school. That wasn't really feasible for us to do, but that was one of the things that was mentioned in the study.
Amanda, I just wanted to say a thank you to the WAFL group and any citizens that also participated in this. I think this is a great award for the city to attain, and hopefully we can keep doing this year after year. I know some of our neighbors have won it year after year, and I think that would be something to strive for. If the citizens wanted to get involved, and you had mentioned that you meet monthly, when is that meeting and where can they, or how can they get more information?
Right, so it kind of varies depending on, we have kind of a small group right now, so depending on what day works to get as many people there as we can, but in general, we've been meeting the last Wednesday of the month, usually at 8:00 or 8:30, and we usually meet at Waverly Health Center, but if they're interested in getting involved, they can go ahead and contact me at the hospital, and we can get them, we can get them looped in with the group, so.
Thank you.
I just had three things that I wanted to talk about from being at the, at the event and being invited to go along. By the best recollection that I can make from seeing the other communities, you know, info boards here, we had about 10 times the production in our garden to the next runner-up. You know, if that was a deciding factor, so that's phenomenal, and I don't know if you were aware of that or not, Ron, but that was, that was very significant when we were all sitting at the table, and it was like, I think the other one was like 800 pounds, and here we are, like boom. The other one, I really appreciated the volunteers, I was one of them, but those that participated in the Go Hawk Hustle and going out and standing at corners, making sure everything was safe back in October, that was a big thing. But I think the thing that I took, that was the biggest takeaway that really hit me hard was the speaker that was there. I can't think of her name.
Lindsay Fenley?
Yeah.
I believe.
Very impactful about mental health and its impacts that it has. If you ever get a chance, definitely pull that up, go see her, hear what she has to say. It'll change your attitude and your mindset about mental health, so.
Yeah, definitely.
Yep.
And that emotional well-being is one of, like, the newer focuses for the Healthy Estate Initiative, and I would love to see that grow in our group as well. I know that they're doing a lot in the school district to support emotional and mental well-being of students. One of our focuses this year is to actually get more involved in the wellness committee with the school, so that we can kind of keep that tied together with our community in our school district and kind of assist them, so I would really like to see that as well.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else for the good?
I just want to say congratulations.
Thanks, it's exciting.
All right, thanks, Amanda.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Ron, again. All right, moving on to item H, proclamation for Iowa Honeybee Day. Whereas honeybees and native insects are important as pollinators for a third of the food we eat, and honeybees are vital in production of over 90 crops grown across the nation, many of which are in Iowa. Honeybees contribute to a healthy Iowa environment by assuring availability of fruits, vegetables, nuts, and flowers for wildlife and all Iowans. Whereas Iowa's 45,000 or more honeybee hives produce about 4 million pounds of honey valued at over $8 million, and honeybees provide an estimated $92 million economic value to Iowa crops from their pollination. Whereas Iowa has over 4,500 beekeepers representing hobbyists, sidliners as part-time businesses, and full-time commercial beekeepers. Hobby beekeepers have as few as one hive to commercial operations with thousands of hives. Whereas traditionally, beekeeping occurred in rural areas of Iowa, now beekeeping increasingly occurs in urban areas with the rising interest of hobby beekeepers for keeping beehives in Iowa cities and towns. Whereas the state of Iowa has an active apiary inspection program to protect honeybees and beekeepers from introduction and spread of apiary diseases and pests, whereas honeybees face serious threats from invasive pests, decreasing bee-friendly forage, variable climate, and increasing pesticide and herbicide pressure. Whereas our state and county roadsides comprise a total of almost 115,000 miles, providing native plantings and reducing the mowing and spraying of herbicides on the roadsides are helping bee survival. Therefore, I, Adam P. Hoffman, Mayor of Waverly, Iowa, along with cities and counties, do hereby proclaim Thursday, February 13th, 2020 as Iowa Honeybee Day, and encourage all citizens, residents, and visitors to join in observing this day and focusing on the importance of honeybees to our state economy, to enjoy the honey and other products of honeybees, to recognize the honeybee's role in maintaining our Iowa environment, and to assist in reducing the threats to honeybee survival in our state. With that, seek a motion to approve the proclamation proclaiming February 13th, 2020 as Iowa Honeybee Day.
I'll move approval of the mayor's proclamation.
Second.
Motion and second. Any comments?
I'm just going to say that my grandson is involved in FFA at Southeast Polk, and their project for this spring are tending some beehives.
Excellent.
So they're excitedly waiting for their bees to arrive so they can get started.
Mm-hmm. So, it's the bee's knees. So, anyway.
I agree.
What's that? Oh. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign? Motion carries. Item I, public comment for items not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presenting officer. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any individual member. Anybody for public comment? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to item J, the consent calendar. All items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one, approve the purchase of a 2020 Dodge Ram 2500 three-quarter ton 4x4 pickup for the Equipment Services Division from Krieger Auto of Waverly, Iowa, for the total purchase price of $28,870. Item number two, approve the purchase of a 2020 Dodge Ram 3500 one-ton cabin chassis for the Sewer Line Maintenance Division from Krieger Auto of Waverly, Iowa, for the total purchase price of $23,829. Item three, pay request from Leclerc Engineering Company for the Airport Obstruction Removal Project 2020 for the amount of $5,400. Item number four, pay request from Leclerc Engineering Company for the Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018 for the amount of $2,156.53. Item number five, pay request from Leclerc Engineering Company for the 20th Street Northwest Reconstruction 2018 Phase 1 Railroad Crossing Improvements for the amount of $5,402.96. Item six, pay request from Snyder &amp; Associates Incorporated for the 4th Street Southwest Reconstruction 2020 for the amount of $39,166.64. Item seven, pay request from Snyder &amp; Associates Incorporated for the 10th Street Southwest Reconstruction 2020 for the amount of $2,237.77. Item eight, pay request from Pitt Pros Incorporated for the Fall 2019 Sledge Hauling and Disposal for the amount of $26,913.92. Item number nine, pay request from Hall &amp; Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Ball Field 2019 for the amount of $25,250.13. Item 10, pay request from ATC Group Services LLC for the Youth Ball Fields 2019 for the amount of $4,700. Item 11, pay request from A&amp;R Land Services Incorporated for Relocation Assistant Services for the Airport Land Acquisition 2012 for the amount of $600. Item 12, Class C Liquor License for Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill. Item 13, ownership update for Hy-Vee. Seeking a motion to?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
I have a, it's not going to change the vote, a comment and question, but it could be important, it might not be, on item eight, our friends at Pitt Pros that take out our sludge, as we learned Saturday, that amount is going to double, I believe Mr. Cherry said, the volume will double, so I got to assume that the 27,000 we're paying this year will become 55-plus thousand next year, and I'm just wondering if, is that a complex It just seems like it, you know, for, this is a commodity essentially, you know, I assume they're selling it to farmers, and it's not very precious, obviously, given the price, but is it, is it something we can?
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that if this is something, you know, that you want to talk about with Mike individually, about this process and how, where it goes, because otherwise, we'd have to pull it from the, from here.
Okay.
So you can pull it if you so choose.
Let's not pull it.
Okay, we'll just follow up with, with Mike on that one-on-one, so. Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign? Consent calendar is approved, thank you. Item K, regular business, resolution 20-07, a resolution approving Crowded Borough LLC facade reimbursement request, and Paula and David Stevenson facade reimbursement request.
I'll move approval of resolution 20-07, approving a facade reimbursement to Crowded Borough LLC in the amount of $1,478.65 for facade improvements completed on the building at 209 East Bremer Avenue, and Paula and David Stevenson's facade grant in the amount of $14,000 for the facade improvements completed on their building at 213 East Bremer Avenue.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion here? They take it the work was all completed, is the mess there in their application, all that kind of stuff, so, move point there. Roll call vote?
Oh four.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Seven zero. Item K is passed, resolution 20-07. Item number two is the first reading of ordinance 1070, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by JDM Property Holdings LLC, located at 209 Ninth Avenue Northwest and 1005 Adams Parkway from R2 1 &amp; 2 Family Residential to PD Plan Development District, and setting a public hearing.
I'll move approval of the first reading of ordinance 1070, an ordinance providing for rezoning of property owned by JDM Property Holdings LLC, located at 208 Ninth Avenue Northwest and 1005 Adams Parkway, from R2 1 &amp; 2 Family Residential to PD Plan Development District, and setting March 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkhouse.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Kengis.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Oh four.
Yes.
Seven zero, motion is approved, as read. Item three, resolution 20-08, a resolution approving the final plan and cost estimate to authorize the purchase of items, and for approving competitive bidding of street, tree, and sidewalk decorative brick installation for the Bremer Avenue Streetscape Project.
I will move approval of resolution 20-08, approving the final plan and cost estimate of $227,020 to authorize the purchase of items, and for approving competitive bidding of street, tree, and sidewalk decorative brick installation for the Bremer Avenue Streetscape Project.
Got a motion? Motion and a second, any discussion on this item?
I have a lot of questions about this item.
Okay.
What are we, are What are we accomplishing or trying to do with this? It seems like some of the paperwork, and looking at the line items, it looks like we're spending nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars on a garbage can, and let's see, this is a sitting group, number one, and we have pictures of these various groups. It's three thousand five-hundred-and-seventy dollars per group of sitting, some probably really, really nice patio furniture. These planters, I guess my question is, we're spending two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars on, I guess I need some update or some kind of information on this.
Well, this is a program that we've been working on since about twenty-sixteen. It's actually been before the council a couple times on ideas about how the things were gonna happen and what was, what we were coming up with. I know the architect has put together designs that are being custom-made, because you can't always find the exact, well, these are a little nicer than the ones you'd make that were custom, or that were not custom-made. I know that the types of benches and things that are going to be put out aren't the type of things you'd have at your house, because they have to be outside all the time, and they have to be heavy-duty, they have to withstand a lot of weather and use. I know the trash receptacles are things that come out of, basically looking at the catalogs of this type of, this particular type of receptacle. It has to be strong enough to withstand use again with what it would take to be outside all the time. We've, we've used the limestone blocks in some ways. I was just gonna point out to the council that we've decided not to use the blocks on the mid-block planters, so there's actually two blocks less on each mid-block grouping, because we just thought that was too much in the mid-block, so the planters by themselves will stand alone on that mid-block. That's a custom planter that has a bench on one side and has some inset in the black metal, that would be out of limestone, so it'd take up our theme that we've been using, or trying to use in the city, to use some limestone decorations, especially in South Riverside, we're doing that. We, we want to do something for the community, for the downtown community. Like I said, this has been something that's been discussed since before the Bremer Avenue project started, since we pulled all the trees. I think the, the general consensus from the group we worked with is that they wanted some, they wanted decorations in the downtown, something that would make it look pleasant, that when people were walking the streets, walking the sidewalks, it isn't just a concrete slab down to the curb. So we've been working on this, this is the final version. Again, this was a version that was already presented to the council last year. Some, some changes have been made and some additions have been made. It's the, it's the kind of cost that you have to make for a public type of thing that's gonna be outside all the time. And we kinda trusted our landscape architect to run this business for some time, and these are the recommendations he's made, and we like the book, we think it'll fit in well with the city.
Can I get a little bit of a clarification as to who "we" is? Like, is this a, who all is part of the decision-making group?
Chamber group, the chamber staff, and some other members of the chamber committee over time. We've had them come and go, some participated all along, some were here and there. Like I said, we've had meetings over the last couple of years, city staff, between Parks and Recreation, or, I guess I shouldn't say this, should I? Leadership Services, their staff, just members of the, of the staff here, with myself and with Connie's been involved in some of this, Paul and Garrett, James has been in some of these meetings, Travis and Tiffany, and Steve Egley and Segalyn, others over the years have been involved in this process.
I, I have to say, I have heard a little bit of feedback from some of the merchants on Bremer Avenue. Most of what I've heard is they feel like they're not, their input hasn't been heard, so, kind of in the sense that there's the, the usual suspects who are making the decisions for what's going on in Streetscape, and kind of a lot of their questions and concerns haven't really been responded to. So kind of my biggest concern is to what extent this plan is represented by the opinions of the downtown merchants who, you know, should be kind of the main beneficiaries of this.
I have to agree with you.
And I, let me add to that, if I remember correctly, and I have to go back and look at the minutes specifically, but when we approved the project, there was a discussion about the opinions of some of the downtown merchants that were concerned when we had the old trees there, that they were covering up their storefronts or covering up their signage, and that's one of the reasons why some of those trees were removed, plus the fact that a lot of them were past their life expectancy. But it was commented at that time that, you know, the business owners would have some input into what was going to be located in the front of their, their store, and I'm not sure that has been done, and I, and I have had people contact me also with some concerns that they were not provided, they may have been provided an opportunity to provide some kind of feedback, but not on a, you know, any kind of established basis. It was kinda like, well, you know, you should have contacted the chamber if you had an issue with it. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that we're gonna put all this money into this, and we're gonna find out that there's a bunch of people in the downtown that really don't like it, and that's who it's supposed to benefit.
Was there a neighborhood meeting like we would have with the, like we did with the Ball Diamonds?
Probably at least once or twice every year, where we've presented the proposal that we had so far. We relied on working with the chamber staff and the people that they were, they were supposed to be talking with, the people within the chamber and the Main Street community. We've just been putting together the final, I mean, this has been the same plan since about a year, and has been presented and discussed. I think that, you know, what you're alluding to is probably the discussion about trees. There's been a lot of discussion about trees, and a lot of discussion is people missing trees, and then you have the people that don't want trees. We reduced the number of trees in the corridor to two trees per block, and most of those are leaning towards the intersections in order to not have three or four along each, in each block segment. We thought that was a better way of opening it up and having some kind of trees. I mean, either you, you have some trees or you have no trees, and if you're gonna have some trees, we thought two is a good number to have on a particular block. More than that, I think there's a lot of communities that have a lot more than two trees per block, but we felt that was a good compromise. We know that we now have on-staff vegetation management people that are good at what they do, they have training and experience, they know what it takes to keep those trees properly trimmed. They would remove them when they're too large. The ones that we took out should have been taken out a long time ago. One thing about street trees, it's a very, very specific type of thing. You have to, you have to manage them and you have to take them out when they're too big, because they're not designed to just grow out until they fall over dead. They're supposed to be taken out and trimmed and pruned. And I noticed, I did, I did note that there's some business owners that when the tree was removed, they realized how much sun they got in their front windows, and how difficult that was to keep things in there without fading and without, things like that. I mean, and these trees aren't gonna be in that category for quite some time, and we're designing more trees that are not quite as huge and big and leafy, that type of thing. Supposed to bring color to the community, supposed to bring plants to the community. And it's one of the reasons we got, that we would be bringing before you next week, is we got a twenty-five-thousand-dollar grant from American Bloom for the installation of trees and plants within our, within our Streetscape. And that's one of those things that, because of the design we had, because we were returning trees to a place that had trees before, that's one of the things that they are really promoting. We were solicited, we received a, a letter inviting us to apply for that grant, we did that, and we were awarded one of the grants, so. It, it's just that emphasis on returning some green, greenery to the walkability of your downtown streets, instead of just having concrete streets. So, again, we do have two streets per block, no more than two street, or two blocks, or two trees in each block.
Two on each side.
Two on each side, yes.
I'm, I agree with you that trees make a, a big difference in a downtown area, they soften the, the area, make it look much more inviting, but I also am sympathetic with those business owners who are concerned about trees being located directly in front of their, their business without them having an input as to whether those trees are going to be there or not. I would feel much more comfortable about this if we did have some kind of a meeting for the Bremer Avenue business people to be able to come and see these plans and comment on whether they wanted a tree or not, and, and be respectful of their, you know, of what they wanted. I don't wanna jam this down anybody's throat.
Well, you know, we're always respectful when it comes to somebody's opinions. The one thing that happens with a Streetscape design, like the one we were trying to do that would look uniform somewhat throughout, is that I have a hard time just saying you're gonna let somebody veto a placement of something or affect the entire design. And it, the trees are gonna be somewhere unless you just say you don't want trees. If you say, tell us we don't want trees, then you're the ones that can approve this or not approve it. But if we're gonna have a tree, it's gonna be some location.
Well, it's gonna be in some location, but can't we be a little bit flexible on where that location is? If someone absolutely does not want to have a tree in front of their storefront, wouldn't it be possible to move it twenty feet one way or the other so it's not in front of their storefront?
So if the, the blocks, the way the, the light, lights are configured, there are two, two lights per block, and so there's basically a third of the space is towards the intersection, then to the light, and then there's a third in the middle, and there's a third. And so we were trying to, to place the trees so that they wouldn't interfere with the lights, and then we didn't put a tree in the middle and left that for the mid-block planter instead. The recommendation was to put another tree in the middle between the lights, so there'd have been three, three trees on each side, and we decided to put the, the mid-block planter instead of doing the tree in the middle. Again, if you, it was, it was a compromise to probably put fewer than might be recommended by landscape experts, but to at least put some trees within our downtown.
Well, I don't, I don't think any of us is necessarily opposed to trees, I think it's the placement, and I, I think it's one thing if, if the tree is between two businesses so you can actually see the signage for each business, but I guess I am concerned, like in the block right next to the river, to the east, the tree is smack dab in the middle of that business. And I know we did hear from that property owner that they had concerns about that. And I, I mean, I'm also beautifying the downtown, and I like some of these ideas, and I, I, there is a bit of sticker shock on paying as much for a, for a garbage can, but you want a garbage can that's not gonna get carried off, and isn't gonna rust, and is gonna be able to withstand the elements, I, I get that. But I do have concerns about the, I don't know, seems like there's a little bit of mystery about how the decisions were made and whether or not businesses were heard, and the downtown merchants have had such a difficult time the last few years that I think we ought to go over and above the call of duty to make sure people are heard and to have an open conversation with them about why the decisions were made, that were made. And I don't know if that happened, I hope it did, but I think we need to make sure we go the extra mile for them.
Well, I, I would reiterate kind of a lot of my concern, again, I like trees, I like the idea of trees in downtown, but I think that there's a lot of business owners who felt like they weren't heard. The individual I spoke to described a meeting where they had a chance to speak their mind, and then there was absolutely no changes made to the plans afterwards, that kind of they felt like it was already a done deal before the planning meeting was done. Everyone had their say, and there were no changes made to the plan at all. So, I mean, I suppose I'd like to know what are some examples of changes you made to the plan as a result of discussions with the downtown merchants?
We reduced the number of trees in each block, and we moved them closer to the intersections instead of being in the middle of the block. Those are the, that's what the architect recommended.
I mean, we tried to impact the least amount of businesses possible, I mean, that was the ultimate goal, and in the end, there are some businesses just don't want a tree in front of them, and that's fine. If council wishes, I don't wanna beat this to death. If you wanna give us a temporary approval to move forward with this, so we can at least get some things looked at, you know, we will contact the businesses that are gonna be affected directly by these trees. If they don't want one, we'll see if one next to them does, we can make a shift. These are not literally in concrete yet, the trees that are gonna be there, we can shift them accordingly and see if that'll help alleviate a lot of the problems that are being discussed.
I can, go ahead.
I think Align did a good job, and I've just looked at so many of these presentations, and one design issue, and this just might be me, you know, we're a river town, if you look at trees along the river, they're very sporadic, and they come up where nature allows them to, and then all of a sudden we've got two and two and two and two, and it just seems very odd with the city of Waverly, that I, I don't think there's any harm in spontaneity, I think that that, in fact, the inverse here maybe kinda concerns me. But a question, what's life performance on this, any of this stuff? Do we know any of that?
Life performance?
Yeah, how long?
I think Paul was talking about, a twenty-year tree would be, would, you'd be lucky to get it twenty years, it's probably more of a ten to fifteen.
Yeah, if you're, if you're asking about trees, then, yeah, if we get to fifteen on them, they'll probably be gone before then, just because they'll be too large.
So in another twenty years, we've gotta pay thirty-eight-hundred dollars per tree, and then I, what, do we know on the garbage cans?
Not necessarily thirty-eight-hundred dollars per tree, because once you've installed, created the installation, a lot of that can be reused, yes.
But I-
That's, that's a major part of the cost, is to make sure the trees don't die, so you create a watering system underneath the brick that is gonna keep them alive.
Is that what's bringing the expense up?
That's what the cost is.
Okay.
The trees themselves are not that expensive.
Right, that's why, like, these gotta be like three or four-hundred-dollar trees that are really expensive to install.
And then you have guards that are, that are pretty, we want to put guards around the trees, and they double as bike, bike racks. Those are relatively expensive, so if you break them down, you kinda see that the installation and the guards are probably the most cost of that, forty-four thousand dollars per tree.
Trees and retailers, they don't, I, I was in a retail group twenty years ago in a different industry, and we met a couple times a year, twenty or thirty of us, and this retailer had this landlord had this tree that came up, and, and these are tree-loving people, these guys love trees, but we spent ten minutes figuring out, jokingly, of course, how to eliminate that tree and everything, from killing it with gasoline to pulling it out with a rope. And the reason I say this, I wanna express that, is when trees are in front of your signage, that is bad, it is not good. So I'd also would need to know, if we talked to Fairway, if we talked to Walgreens, they've got three trees in front there, I think Fairway had a couple, Quickstar has a couple, that, that I think could be detrimental there. So I'm concerned about that, I'm also concerned about anything heavy along where I'm seeing bicycle go, bicycles go now along, along the sidewalk, and I don't know all of these answers, just kinda some from observation and concerns I have, I'm all for, for beautification, and I don't know what the proper way to, to move forward on, on something like this is, but I think if we moved forward on what I'm seeing here today, we'd have some very furious people. I think this-
I mean, I suppose I-
From this public's view, stuff comes up on the agenda really fast, and we know it doesn't, yes, stuff happens on the inside back here, but for, for business owners, they're living their daily lives, and this pops up on the agenda, and it's like, oh, I didn't know they were putting trees in front of my business, so that's where I, I just think we need to move a little more cautiously.
I think it's, this is a capital project funding, and I just, what was that, two cents?
Probably four cents, and it was funded a year and a half ago.
I just feel like there's, looking at the budget that we've been doing, I feel like there's two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars that we could probably put towards something else. I, I'm just, you know, sixty thousand dollars on planters, thirty thousand dollars on seeding, that's a lot, and how long is this gonna last, and, you know, just how, the garbage- And, you know, just how, the garbage, I don't see garbage floating around on Bremer Avenue, so do we really need six of these $950 garbage cans? Because I don't see garbage floating around. Our streets look really beautiful already, and they look very clean, and I just don't think that spending $240,000 on this, I, I think it could be used somewhere else coming up in the near future. Bike trails, what, $110,000 to continue on, on 10th Avenue? We could use it for that instead, I, I guess is-
I have, I have some concerns, and it's just, the, the trees aside, I mean, you know, trees create oxygen, and it, and it's nice, and it gives you some shade, and, you know, the business owners, obviously, I think should get input in that, obviously. But my question is, these rocks, these boulders, and these chairs, and these planters, who are they for? Who is going to utilize this? I drive down Bremer Avenue all the time. I work for some businesses downtown. I don't see anybody sitting in the benches we currently have. Who is this for? Are we just spending money to spend money? As a taxpayer, that's kind of concerning to me. If we're going to spend money, let's, let's spend it on infrastructure. We have infrastructure failing all over town. They're working on my water main in my neighborhood tonight, and I just see that we've got failing infrastructure, which is a cancer underground, and we're paying for a facelift. I think we're maybe spending our money in the wrong spots. We get infrastructure taken care of, we get, we get that all lined out, then we'll start talking about more beautification stuff. You know, if we can get grants to pay for trees, you know, talk with the businesses, get that squared away. But I, I did the math earlier, it looked like we were spending $13,000 alone on limestone boulders. I don't get it. I, I don't understand why you would want that in front of your business. I don't want, I don't know why you'd want to shovel around it. I'm assuming these chairs are going to get bolted down so they don't get stolen. You got to shovel around that, too? I, I mean, is the city going to do that, or are you expecting the business owners to take care of that? I mean, you wouldn't put a boulder and some chairs in your driveway or, or your sidewalk at your house. Why are we doing that to business owners downtown?
And I'll piggyback off of the, the snow removal thing. I did have one person that commented and said, you know, I have a, a contractor that does my snow removal, and every obstacle that I add to the mix increases the, the cost, because now they can't, you know, clean it as quickly, they have to trim around it, that kind of thing. Another comment that was made from an individual face-to-face was, you know, who is asking for this improvement? You know, what's the, what's the core root behind it? Who was, you know, somebody come up and say, no, now that Bremer Avenue is done, you know, we'd like to see this. Was there a body that came forward with that? And, you know, going back to the, the chamber, or the design committee, or whatever you want to refer to it as, is, I think there was a due diligence to solicit to the business owners, you know, hey, this is what we're looking at, or just in general sense, would you appreciate a tree, or would you rather not have one? Take that inventory, and then see where businesses that would be accepting, and then making it flow. But I, I would have to ask this bill, is, is there an issue with uniformity, block to block? I mean, is that a concern?
Well, I think anybody would have a concern of how their, how their community looks, whether it looks haphazard, or whether it looks, you have one here, and one over there, and one somewhere else.
Right.
And, and during the winter, we take the chairs out, and we take the blocks, could be actually moved, too, and so could the planters. They could be stored somewhere. I mean, it isn't, there's, there's ways around of, can you, can you shovel snow around it?
Right, yeah.
We can make that happen.
So, we're going to have more city employees with more work to do to move stuff that nobody's using. So, we're, we're putting stuff there that I don't see anybody really utilizing, especially for the quarter of a million dollars we're talking about. It's going to be underutilized, and then we're going to, on top of that, now have to pay city employees to pick them up, take them to a building, and store them someplace. You're just, again, looking at the big picture, this money could be better spent, you know, as a taxpayer, my opinion is, it could be better spent on fixing the problems we know we have that are under the ground. It's a, it, like I said before, it's a cancer. We know it's there, but instead of addressing the cancer, we're doing a facelift. I, I just don't get it.
I do wonder, and beautification's very important, and the flag things, that's not, that was a separate, that sounded like a separate deal. I didn't see that in here.
You're talking about the banners?
Banners, yeah.
The banners are already purchased and are ready to be put up.
And I think that's, that's very, I mean, that's going to be very visible, people are going to see that, and I imagine we can switch the flags out, right, seasonality type of stuff, so. So, I think stuff like that is good. There's probably additional things that we need to do. I'm hearing, you know, Christmas lights. People want better Christmas lights. I think that's an important part of beautification, and if you think about how important, you know, Christmas on Main is, there may be an opportunity for us to become the Christmas town, for lack of better things. But I, I guess, you know, sticking on this, and again, I don't know how we proceed, but I think that, I, I think the public would, well, I know personally, and there's several that would hang me if I voted yes on this, so.
I think a little bit is, is it the chicken or the egg? I think of towns like Decorah, Cedar Falls, you know, places that have really put time and effort and money into beautifying their downtown, and so I think that if you, if you create a more attractive space, I think more people are likely to come and hang out and stay there and sit. I agree with you, I don't commonly see people sitting on the benches, but where the benches are placed, they tend to be, I can only think of one, that's like near the diner, and it's sort of dark under there, and I'm not sure I'd go sit there either, right? But if, if there was a more attractive space, I think it might make people want to linger more downtown. And so, I, I think we are, project by project, trying to improve infrastructure. We did that on Bremer. You know, and now, we know where everything is underground, things have been updated, and, and now's the time to, to perhaps beautify. So, I, I do think that this is a project that we have, it has been talked about by previous city councils for, gosh, at least the last three years, with the plan repeatedly brought back to this body. And so, I, I'm, I'm personally in favor of beautifying, but I do have concerns that if a business owner does not want a tree in front of a relatively narrow frontage that has signage, I think that needs to be respected, or at least discussed, person to person. And I, I've only been contacted, and we were as a group, by one downtown merchant. I haven't heard from other people. But that person had concerns about putting money into signage and then having it covered up. I think putting a tree or two in front of Walgreens or Fairway, especially Fairway that's set back from the street, a tree in front of Fairway is not going to block Fairway, especially because they have a really tall sign. And Walgreens, you're going to know it's Walgreens because it says that on every side of the building. If you've got a narrow frontage, and, and there is a potentially bushy tree right in front of your, your business's sign, I think that's an issue.
I think that pulling out of Fairway and having a tree blocking my view of traffic could be an issue as well. So, I mean, I, I think downtown is beautiful. I think we have a nice downtown already, and I just don't think that we need to spend $240,000 to make it beautiful, even more beautiful, with these chairs, that we're going to increase work for leisure services, or, and having to take care of the plants, having to put them, this stuff back in the spring, and take it and store it. I mean, we're already talking about storing stuff and having problems storing stuff. Where are we going to store it? You know, do we, is it necessary? Is it something that is absolutely needed? Is it something that we can do down the road? Maybe, but I think right now, we have other things to worry about, and we should probably think about the consequences of spending $240,000.
On, on park benches that are on the side of a highway.
That we need to remove, and they're only there for half the year, and that we need to have more staff take care of them and utilize, you know.
I'd like to clarify something with the city staff. The trees that you guys are looking at, they're the ones that are on the, the, just like outside this building on the east side, those small, thin trees that grow to 20 feet or whatever, and so we're not talking about big, we're talking smaller trunk trees, correct?
They're ornamental. They're not made to be two-foot wide, made or anything like that. Was there before, they're very small in size.
And is the intent of the city to try to get as many of these plantings from local businesses?
Actually, that's not true, because the, most, most of the trees are bought from, or shipped into our local businesses.
They're sourcing them.
The source, like, the source.
They're sourcing them, of course.
Right.
And that premise is the reason why they have to have those cages around them, because they're ornamental, they're not big and durable to be, you know, tugged on and that kind of thing. You know, I'll just offer this, is I, I take appreciation to what Ann does at Renewed Purpose in being able to, you know, showcase a few of the items that she has in her store when weather permits outside of her store. And that, you know, adding more to the mix may be detrimental to, to her business. I, I can't speak for her, but I'll give that consideration. But I'll ask Garrett this question, how much consideration for the increase in all of the planters with the staff? I know we, we talked in budget session, the wonderful thing that all of our departments do with the amount of staff they have, it's the police department, it's your department, it's right here at City Hall. We do a lot with a little, okay? So, adding this much labor during the summer months, as far as tending to the planters and, and trees and those types of things, how's that going to impact our labor force during those months?
Sure. Paul's already got a plan for it. We are probably about tripling the number of flowers that we will have downtown, you know, including Coleman Park flower baskets, that kind of stuff. But Paul's already got it all laid out. Will it take more time? Sure it will. We'll be able to handle that.
Okay.
The one concern would be if we are talking about moving things for the winter, stuff like that, we will have to look into that, because we have talked about it as being a possibility, but up until right now, it wasn't really, the, the plan was kind of to be to leave them out. So, if that's something where we do need to take them in, we'll have to explore that a little more, but the staff is great, they'll be able to handle it.
Right, and I have no question about your, your, Paul, or your ability to evaluate that. Just don't want to get in a position where we, we move forward with this, and then, you know, later on, hey, we got to hire more part-time staff, or, you know, staff to address it during this time. So, it's like if we get a bigger pool, obviously, we got to have more guards and, you know, support staff, that kind of thing. Don't want something that, you know, like this, that is going to impose more expense than what we see here.
Would it be possible to table this, to give you, Garrett, time to talk to staff about where to store this stuff in the winter, and the manpower needed to do that, and to give James and Bill time to talk to some of the business owners that have expressed concern about the trees? I don't know.
There's only been one that I'm aware of.
One.
Okay, yeah, I, I think we probably need to hit the pause button on this, and have an opportunity to have, you know, meet with the downtown business owners and see if there are a number of them that have an issue with this and not. I mean, I think it's a great plan.
I do, too, but I think-
If, I, I mean, if it were my, my decision alone, I would say, yeah, go for it. No, no question about it. I love trees downtown, I think they're a great addition, I think they really make the downtown sparkle, much, much more inviting than looking at concrete and brick. But there are also other people that might have a different opinion. I'm getting the feeling that those people's opinion may not have been given the opportunity to be expressed, and I want to make sure that those people at least have the opportunity to be heard. We might still go ahead with this plan, but I want to make sure that, that anybody in the downtown business area that feels that they have not been heard has an opportunity to be heard. And I, I would, I, I think, I think tabling isn't the right thing. I think it's, I'm trying to remember.
Postpone, I think.
Postpone, yeah. I, I would postpone this, and I know that the planting season is coming very, very quickly, so I don't know how long we can postpone it, but I, I would, and, and I will make a motion for this later on if, if we need to, but I would think that we maybe postpone this until our March meeting. Give us an opportunity to set up a meeting date with the downtown, any downtown business people who feel that they want to have some input in this. Let them see the plans, let them ask their questions, let's get all of this stuff out in the open, find out who's in favor of it, who's not in favor of it, and then we have a, then I feel more comfortable about voting on it.
One other thing I would like to add, is I do feel as though we set a budget for how much we, like, were willing to put into the streetscape, and I feel as though the plan was designed to use up that budget. I look at this, and I feel like, while I like the idea of some seeding opportunities on the street, I mean, I, I know that our guest councilman has said, you know, we don't, people don't use the, the benches we have, but I think that if there were some opportunities that might be, bring people out. At the same time, I feel like we don't need to put them all out everywhere at once. I think of like South Riverside Park, where we're kind of building that in stages. I feel like we could get away with about half of the seeding that we're putting out there and still have a dramatic increase in the amount of seeding available. We could have seeding on half of the corners instead of every corner. I, I kind of feel like we put out as much seeding as we had because they were trying to, you know, use up the budget that was there. I would like to see maybe half as much seeding, and then see how much of it's used, and if we need to put more out there, kind of in a second round. I do like the idea of making sure that all the businesses are heard. I like the idea of postponing this. I like, I like the trees, I like the plan, I don't know if we need to have as much out there as we have in this plan.
Well, yeah, I mean, the benches are as much aesthetic as they are functional.
Sure.
You know, they provide an aesthetic, a welcoming place to be, whether people are tired and need to sit down or not, you know, and the same way-
And, and to, to respond to Matthew Steiner's comment, I don't think bicycles need to worry about the big, heavy blocks, but it certainly is a refuge of self-defense for pedestrians if there's a car that's getting a little too close to the curb. It's nice to know that there's something big and heavy between you and that vehicle. So, I mean, there, there are safety issues in putting those big, heavy blocks out there. I, I don't think, as a bicyclist, that I, I am at, at risk of running into a cinder block, assuming I'm sober when I'm riding.
I think just one final com- safety comment on that, when you put people on the streets, you're inviting conflicts, so that, I haven't got, that's where my safety concern lies. And, and we should look, and I don't, I know there's no data out there on this, is this safer? Is, is, I think, a very legitimate question, number one. Number two, just something to check, ADA compliance. You know, you can, with ADA, you can usually find a, a conflict somewhere, and I would just be concerned about that, just the way I'm seeing these roll out.
Do you mean, like, is there adequate width on the sidewalk for people in wheelchairs?
In the ADA stuff, there's always odd, I mean, I think, didn't we have something here with our sidewalks being certain slope percentage, or some weird thing?
The pet ramps.
Yeah, and that was, our design was correct, it was how they were installed.
Okay. And there may be nothing on ADA, but with, with chairs moving around and, and people, there's-
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't have any experience with outdoors, but, you know, you know, I'm, I'm a remodeled contractor, and I do some commercial. So, ADA, you know, you're going to have, even instead of a bathroom, you have to have your five-foot circle for that, that's for them to be able to, you know, get an on and off of the stool. But, I mean, the sidewalk, what is the distance average from the front of the building to the curb?
16 feet.
Yeah, so you're, I mean, if you're taking, if you're taking up eight feet of that with the, the chairs and whatever else you're putting in there, ADA, I can't-
Four and a half feet.
Yeah, I mean, I was, I was, you know, going even, you know, huge, we'd still have plenty of room to, for ADA, you wouldn't, I don't think you'd ever have any issues with that.
The walkable area is, is six, is seven to eight feet wide all the way through, and it's the proper slope, and we, we maintain that all the way through. The four feet next to the building may, may be sloped somewhat, and the four foot next to the curb may be sloped, because that's the only way we get the fall from the buildings to the curb. So, we have that eight-foot, seven to eight-foot walkway through.
Okay.
Depending on how long this takes, this could, this could make it difficult to get this done this spring, because you have to, we're already, we've already bought the flowers and the plants, by the way, so, because we had already had this approved, and I just took it back to final, final approval. Trees haven't been purchased, we haven't purchased any furniture, we just have identified what furniture is out there. So, there could be changes in, in what kind of furniture you use. Blocks are some, one of those things that we, we're looking to move around if we needed to. If they don't work in a particular area, we could move them to a different area. We wouldn't have to buy as many, which is why we didn't put the blocks in the mid-block. These mid-block planters are not that big. I think they're going to get swallowed up by the, the amount of space we have. The groupings on the corners were supposed to be more aesthetic, probably, like, like Rod said, than, than usable. although they still can be used. And the benches on the mid-block planters, we felt would be probably as usable as anything, to be quite honest with you. We really felt like bringing color to the downtown especially, the flowers, the plants, the planters, was, was, we wanted to do that for sure. That was one of those things that we felt was important to do, to have color on every, every part of the blocks. And we found that we've left those planters out, the square ones we've had. They haven't been really difficult to get around in the winter. In fact, they decorate them in the winter for Christmas on Main. So they've been useful for that purpose. You know, the trees are the, are the big one. That's the one that people seem to have strong opinions about, and we understand that. So, and I don't know how you solve that. Because if you solve it by having half of them missing, then you get the jack-o'-lantern effect and what's missing and what's not, and how does it really appear if you don't have a consistent look to your downtown? So, you know, if you're uncomfortable with it, we have to move, we have to delay it, and we'll do that. Whatever you decide.
All right, we're sitting on a motion in a second, nobody's called the questions, so from here.
It's easier, sir, staff can just pull the request completely and bring it back to a later date, if that's acceptable.
Well, I mean, technically, we should vote to postpone the resolution and to a later date. Because we do, we have the motion on the floor.
Correct.
You can also just remove it from the agenda.
Since the vote's not taking place, we can just pull it.
Right.
Can it be brought back at the first meeting in March?
I don't know, we're gonna have this all knocked out by then. And it's quite an order to go meet with all the businesses, see who wants a tree, who doesn't want a tree.
I don't think we need to meet individually with each business.
I think I'd rather, with all due respect, I don't want to get in this jam again where we go through all this work and we come here and we take a little bit of a beating, which is well-deserved.
There's a lot of noise ongoing with this already.
So I want businesses to be acceptable of it's there or it's not there. Because if we get a whole half a block that doesn't want any trees, now what do we do with that?
Right.
We have one over here, one down over here somewhere. Because if you go to the downtowns you're talking about, they are tree-lined. It's beautiful, or they are tree-specific, whether it's color, shape, style. That's the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish here, to be like the decorers that we're always compared to, though I don't know why. And the other cities that we think are better than we are, we're trying to become that for people to stop comparing us to them and actually be that for them. And if that's not what we're gonna do, that's absolutely fine. We'll certainly go back to it and redraw it and go through it. But we may miss the growing season this spring. Like I said, this is four years in the making. I was almost wanting to just call a question if it's down, it's down, we're done. That would have been much easier for us as staff to do, but it's not the right thing to do. So we will go back to the drawing board a little bit. We will meet with business owners as need be and see if we can't piece this back together. If that appeases the council. So work to pull it and just come back when we're ready, because I don't know when that's gonna be, honestly. I mean, we got that thing, that budget rolling around here a little bit, that's taking some time too. It's not a easy, we'll just reallocate our time. I mean, we're jammed up too, the way this is, so. We'll get back to you as soon as we can with it, and we'll see if it causes us to miss a window or not. And we'll see what we can do in the meantime, if that appeases Mayor and Council.
Yeah, I just want to say, I do, I do think overall, I'm in favor of this plan. And I do think we should beautify the downtown, and I do think it will serve as something that will pull people toward the downtown. My concern is that, and I, as I mentioned, I've only heard from one business owner, and it sounds like Brian and maybe some others have heard from more than one. And so I think that the issue is, what, what is it? Is there anything about how this process was run that needs to be improved so that people do feel like they were heard and had input? And I think that I've heard that feedback in other areas, right, recently, about other issues. And so I think that it would be worth it to take a look at that. Overall, I'm in favor of this, and I am hoping that some headway is made and we can see it back on the agenda soon. I don't want to delay it because I think it should be done, but I have concerns about the rollout. And it sounds like if things have been removed, this might not actually be the final plan? Were the, were there things taken out?
We were just taking those two blocks out of each mid-block.
Right, it was minor in a sense. And I understand a lot, Ann, I just don't want to keep beating this to death tonight. We have other things to discuss and move on.
Yes, I agree.
I figure like we hammered it, we get the point, we'll take them back and start to try and get this figured out.
Okay, so procedurally, Carla?
Brian, would you like to withdraw your...
I would be happy to withdraw my motion.
And Ann, would you like to...
Throw your second?
Yeah, sure.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Council.
So do we need to have an individual request to have it pulled from the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Just after...
All right, okay. Okay, moving on to item four. Resolution 20-09, a resolution approving change order number one and approving pay application number four for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project.
I'll move to approve Resolution 20-09, approving change order number one in the amount of $2,253.60. Pay application number four in the amount of $42,932.96 to K Cunningham Construction, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa for the Cedar Lane Reconstruction 2019 project.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Carla.
Glazer?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bo four?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
20-09 is approved, 7-0. Resolution 20-10, a resolution approving change order number one, accepting the East Bremer Avenue Sanitary Sewer Extension 2019 project as complete. Approving pay estimate number one and approving pay estimate number two as the final pay request.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-10, approving change order number one in the amount of an $18,719 decrease, accepting the East Bremer Avenue Sanitary Sewer Extension 2019 project as complete. Approving pay estimate number one in the amount of $156,222.22 and approving pay estimate number two in the amount of $8,222.14 as the final pay request to Boomerang Corporation of Anamosa, Iowa.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Carla.
Cengis?
Yes.
Rocky?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bo four?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Vote of 7-0, Resolution 20-10 is approved. Resolution 20-11, item number six, a resolution approving an amendment to the City of Waverly, City Council rules and procedure.
I would move proof of Resolution 20-11, approving amendment to the City of Waverly City Council rules of procedure.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion?
I'd like to thank Rod for the work he did on this.
Oh, I'd like to thank Bill for the work he did on this.
I appreciate that as well, so. Hearing no further comments or discussion, roll call vote, please, Carla.
Rocky?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bo four?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkhouse?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Vote of 7-0, 20-11 is approved. Item number seven, approval of council liaison to the boards and commissions.
I'll make a motion to approve council liaison to the boards and commissions.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? I'll read it, is, the motion should be fully read. Approve Chris Glazer as the council liaison to the Waverly Chamber of Commerce and Brian Bergen as the council liaison to the Waverly Public Library Foundation Board. So Matt had made the motion.
I second.
Heather second has read. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Item number seven is approved. Thank you for working your personal schedule and work schedule for that, I appreciate that. Item L, reports from boards and commissions. Item number one, planning and zoning commission minutes from November 7th of 19. Item two, board of adjustments minutes, November 11th, 2019. Item three, Waverly, Bremer-Waverly Law Board minutes of January 13th, 2020. And item four, senior center calendar, February 2020, all received into record as presented. Item M, staff updates, James.
Just wanted to let everyone know, for the candlelight ski on Saturday, we ended up with 55 participants, human participants. We also had three dogs. And we did have a handful of skiers out there, even though the trail wasn't real conducive to that with, you know, kind of the cold weather we had last week. But we had a pretty decent turnout for it, I think everyone had a good time.
Thank you. Mike? Ellen? Okay.
Well, at this moment, then, sir, I'd like to introduce our new fundees director, starting with us tonight. Jessica Mayer, O'Sage native, we plucked her out of La Crosse, Wisconsin, working the county system. Ugh. From the good side to the city side, and former county, I can say that. From the city side, and so we're pleased she was able to join us today and actually picked a council meeting day to get a nice, long, full day in here with us. So I don't know if she has anything she'd like to say or add, but we're first pleased to have her here.
I'm excited to be here.
Excellent, thank you, Jess.
I think it's all we have, so, sir.
Perfect, thank you very much there. City council comments, we'll start over here with where we're headed this evening.
Let's see, having gone through our budget meetings this past weekend, I would like to encourage all citizens to kind of stay aware of what's going on with the budget. I think we're going, we had some very productive, though long and possibly painful, meetings. But I'd like to encourage all the citizens to kind of keep an eye on that and stay aware of what's going on with that. And Matt Vane, I invite any constituents who wanted to come and talk about city council business. I will be at the porthouse afterwards, come join me for a beer.
Excellent, for two, Mr. Glazer.
I want to remind everybody that the library has this interactive movie night upcoming on February 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Dinner and childcare is provided, The Princess Bride is being shown, and registration is required. I will be there because I love The Princess Bride.
Brad?
Well, I would just like to second what Brian said. You know, the next few weeks, we're going to have some difficult decisions to make here as a council moving forward over the next couple of years with our capital budget and our regular operating budget. And I would really appreciate, you know, getting suggestions and comments from people. If they could email them at my city email address, I, I make sure that I read those. If they come to my personal email address, those sometimes don't get answered, but my city email address, I always do. And I would suggest that the best way to do that is if you are in favor or opposed to a particular item, that you not only just say, well, I'm opposed to this, or I'm in favor of this, but, you know, say why you are. I'm in favor of this because this is what I think it will do. Or I'm opposed to this because, you know, I have, I'm concerned about these issues. That goes a lot further than just saying, you know, I think you should vote no, or I think you should vote yes. So, but I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I think that they would agree with me that those kinds of inputs are always extremely welcome. And, and not just on my email either. You know, nine times out of 10, the communications that I receive from people are because I see them in the grocery store, or I see them on the sidewalk, or I see them in a restaurant, or somewhere else. A gas station, you know? So, so please, feel free to just stop and say, hey, I saw that you're discussing this. I'd like to get my two cents worth in. I, I, not only do I appreciate it, but I really do enjoy that.
Thank you, Rod. Heather?
I have to agree with you, Rod, that even coming up, even if you want something, but you have other ideas on how to get there, that's important too, so I agree with that. So, Waverly Area Veterans Post has wonderful happenings if you don't have any plans for Valentine's Day yet. It is a Valentine's Day dinner and show. It is, there's actually veterans of comedy will be there. So the show and dinner cost $35 per person. If you just want to come watch the show, it's $25. Reservations are required, so you can call the Waverly Area Veterans Post, 483-9287. So I think I might have some new Valentine's Day plans, so.
What's the date on that again, Heather?
The 14th.
Tell your, tell your wife.
Just another word about the budget, I want to thank staff for all the preparation they did for the budget. It was, they were organized, the presentations were very informative, and it helps us make good decisions. I would encourage people, if you don't want to watch the entire 16 hours of budget deliberations, perhaps watch, yeah, watch the section after lunch on Saturday because that's really when we talked about the capital projects. And there was very good discussion about the projects that are much needed, but how are we going to pay for them? And we do have infrastructure that needs to be repaired, but it doesn't come for free. So I would encourage people to watch that. Just a welcome to Jess, we're happy you're here, and I don't, you don't have eyes in the back of your head, but Jennifer was smiling through most of the meeting. Yeah, we appreciate Jennifer's hard work over the years, and it's good you're gonna, there'd be overlap so you can orient Jess.
Matthew?
I just want to thank council and staff for very productive budget sessions so far. And reassure the public that this council, I think, will get along very well. No one was throwing chairs on Saturday, other, outside of maybe a couple really bad sewage jokes. I think everything went well. So, thank you, everyone, for that. Also want to give a shout out to Professor Pilcher's accounting class at Workburg. I reached out to the community three weeks ago about some, really what I saw as a challenge in our, with the recycling industry. So they are tasked with trying to figure out what's best economically and what's best environmentally. And we'll see what comes out of that. Their project, I believe, is due April 15th or 16th. Perhaps invite them to present to the council when they're, when they're finished with that in late April. I think that could be very productive for us to look at that. And did visit Public Works Building with Mr. Cherry as well. And kind of going back to, as I was talking about efficiencies, those departments have really been doing an excellent job at driving efficiencies. I won't get into specific examples, but really some excellent work being done there, so. Until I have...
You're good today? All right. I'll close it up with, it's our responsibility to, when we go through the budget, to collaborate, communicate, and coordinate that. Those are, you know, the three Cs that I stand behind, what we do, but more specifically with the budget. So like Rod and a lot of people have emulated up here is, you know, engage with your ward, your at-large, myself, you know, that kind of thing. Get the information so that you know what we're talking about, how you know what the rollback is, and all those types of things. There's a lot to it that you can, can gain. I did go to the 506 Cafe last Tuesday for lunch, had some really good tacos. Can't go wrong with tacos, you know? And they're gonna have their next one on March 3rd, so I encourage you to check that out. And just a kudos as I close out here to Rod, pat you on the back for cutting your trip short to make sure that you were back for budget session on Saturday. I don't want that to go unnoticed. There are your constituents in the community that you're, do diligence there. So with that, I seek a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, for adjourn, thank you.